Thank you. Don't believe we have additions? Katie, do we have anything last minute?
Uh, no.
No. Any additions by the board?
Yes.
What do you have, Sally?
Are we doing the planning board appointments tonight?
Uh, possibly. We need to go into an executive session for that.
Um, and might we add to the consent agenda enforcement of the recycling law that we have for rental units?
In general. In general.
You want to add that?
Yeah, yes.
All right, let's just add to the agenda then because that shouldn't require board action, but if it's the point where it does, that needs us to talk about it.
You have, like, you have Ariana not like having executive session for the legal negotiations?
Oh, yes.
So we've got two things for executive session: planning board appointment and CSEA, and then enforcement of recycling container law that we wrote. I believe, is this the one you said we wrote two years ago?
I think it's your proposal, Jason.
The one that says that you have to have recycling in proportion to beverage?
Yes, and that carriers have to provide recycling.
Right, and we can pull their license if they don't, etc., etc., okay.
Yes, I think we need to talk about that.
All right, let's put that as number 11. I put 10 as executive session, 11 is that law enforcement. And we won't do it in that order, but just...
Yeah, I don't think it's something that has to be over there.
All right. With those additions, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Was there another?
What about your secret? Your wetlands.
That should be on the...
No, it's not.
Why is that not on the agenda? Katie, why is that not on the agenda?
I don't know.
You came after the packet was produced.
It should have been, it was actually said before the packet was produced, but the type one secret law, the wetland production?
I, Jason, I don't have any answers for you. I have my own, sorry.
All right. Well, let me just ask, did everyone see that enough to have a conversation with it tonight, or should we put it out for our next meeting? I am, it's really up to the board.
I saw it, but I don't know.
I'll have to see the...
Yeah, I did.
Tell you what, when I add it, I'll just give the Cliff Notes version and we can decide what to do with it.
Yeah, if we need to move it, that's fine.
If we need to table this one, all right. So those agenda approb, uh, improvements, amendments, I move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Put a comment. Can I hear a comment publicly? Don?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk briefly, stand up.
You don't have to say your name, but if you'd like. Oh, no, you can stand up, please. But you don't have to say your name, but if you'd like, we'll pray.
Yeah, that's my name, Chris Henry. I'm actually one of the owners of 105 Huguenot Street. I understand there's some, you know, people are upset about the house, so I wanted to address it and I watched the public, the village board meeting from June 26, I believe. There were some upset parties and there was a lot of things that were said that frankly upset me and were true, so I wanted to just take some time, read something, clear the air, if that's okay.
Please.
Okay. In January of 2012, I purchased the house in Huguenot Street with family members. Then this house was not maintained. Frankly, it was an eyesore of the jewel of the community, which is Huguenot Street. We confirmed with the village that there were no restrictions on vacation rental by owner use, and we did this before buying the house, and this was a deciding factor in us making the decision to purchase and embark on a year-long restoration of the home. My brother and Selsa, his brother-in-law and owner of the house, were up there weekend after weekend sanding, lugging material, hauling refuse and painting. Many in the neighborhood saw me as well. Many of you returned our waves of love, even provided us with much-needed encouragement. But not once has anyone in the community reached out to us directly to voice any concern regarding our house. My brother Mike was informed by mail that there was a complaint filed by four neighbors, two of which have never spoken to us. He went to meet with Kurt, who later dismissed the complaint, and it was suggested that he try to work things out, where my brother Mike promptly followed up in person and afterwards with an unreturned email to Ms. Nguyen with a request that she forward the message to the other concerned parties. She did provide feedback during that conversation on Huguenot Street, all of which we immediately obliged to. She asked us to remove our 1997 caravan from the driveway, stating it was an eyesore. This is a normal registered, fine, insured, family car of ours. Despite the latest nature of the request, I donated the car to appease those concerned. We were informed that there was one group of renters whose noise disturbed Ann Quinn, and this is obviously not the type of group we want coming into our home, and since then we've started doing even more thorough screening on any potential renters, and we even reject a lot of requests that we get. We're only accepting reservations from families or groups coming up for a specific activity like 5Ks or the one on the reg or graduation, summer events, etc. Ms. Nguyen asked us to limit the cars when visitors come, and I have done so, but the claim that this is a party house with constant noise and garbage is simply not true. Ms. Nguyen and Ms. Quinn state that they never see us, the owners, but my brother Mike and his family are up there at least two weekends a month, sometimes longer. Selsa and his family are up there twice a month. I'm up at least once a month. Stating we're up or not up there is completely untrue, helping to build a false story that we're turning Huguenot Street into some Jersey Shore-esque party zone. We block out all the weekends that we plan on spend, we plan on spending at the house on BRVO and Airbnb websites. That's why it looks like we're always running it out, but a lot of those blockings is us. We block it out ourselves and nobody requests it. If someone had asked us this, we would have explained it to him or her. We're not looking for 105 Huguenot Street to be a cash cow, as referenced in the meeting a couple of weeks ago. We have taken down the BRVO.com and Airbnb.com listings and are not accepting any additional rentals at a respect for the situation until we receive some guidance on village and townwide policy. We have been willing to limit the number of cars, provide more detailed rules, and even limit how much of the time the house is rented. The claims during last week's board meeting that our cars are going to destroy historic Huguenot Street and our renters pose a threat to the historic homes close by is an exaggeration with no merit. There are many cars driving down historic Huguenot Street each day, not a result of our house. If there are noise issues, we have not been called. Why have the police not been called? Like the mayor had said at the June 26 meeting, please call the police every time you feel there's a noise or conduct issue. We encourage you to do that. We're supposed to hear, we're surprised to hear the claim that New Palt's business orders are against vacation rentals. Daytrippers and vacationers drive a large portion of the New Palt's economy. New Palt's is featured in the 2013 Island of New York TV campaign. We've spoken to the Ulster County Tourism Board, the Island of New York Campaign, and the Empire State Development Board. We've also spoke to the State Historic Preservation Commission, and we said that vacation rentals should be nurtured as they derive the use of the sites and bring economic benefits throughout the town. They are good for the village economy and good for Huguenot Street. Current options for families are the 87 Motel on the highway or the expensive Mohawk Mountain House. So vacation rentals are crucial to the village economy, and there are over 30 of them in New Palt's on BRVO.com alone. Yes, Huguenot Street is beautiful and treasured area in the village, but it doesn't seem right that they should have their own exclusive rules that don't apply to the rest of New Palt's. We know other people in town who would agree with me. It comes a point where this is beginning to feel like a personal attack on us and not just our neighbors concerned about the preservation of the historic district. We had family, friends, and their children over on June 14 at 4:00 p.m. on a Friday afternoon and caught our neighbor taking pictures of us. It's very creepy. They remind the fact that the very next day, the house at 112 Huguenot Street, who was one of the fourth complaining about us, had a party with six cars in front of their house. We're not trying to do anything to them. We enjoy spending time in New Palt's. We love New Palt's. We went to school in New Palt's, where we assumed we could relax in a peaceful environment with our families, but all of this has been most unwelcome. We're willing to work with our neighbors, the village, and take feedback and positive arguments. If you want us to limit the number of cars to two, fine, we've already actually done that. Limit the number of people to five, we're willing to do that. Families only for specific activities, they're coming up for a wedding, we're happy to do that. We're asking for specific guidance on vacation properties in New Palt's. Rather than rush legislation, tactics like hacking the Airbnb site as suggested in the last meeting, or searching for a technicality in the village code or other legislation that discriminates us. Ulster County is driven by tourism and agriculture, and what a better place for a vacation rental than achieving to a national landmark street, quite literally a tourist mecca. Village and townwide guidelines are the answer to these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Henry, if you'd like to give me your statement.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Has there been a comment? And Don?
Address you as Chair of Public Access. It would be a little weird if I was speaking about public access and not being heard, so I wanted to help by my performance. The Public Access Advisory Committee was formed many years ago. We were given many tasks, and I believe that we've achieved them. Our membership is down right now, and as I go to recruit new members, and they say, "Well, what's the work to be done?" It's not what I'm saying. We have put in place permanent policies governing the use of the channel for all programming. We've put in place, I've gone through an RFP process that shows Public Access Coordinator, and that process can be used again and should be a new coordinator. We have renewed the 10-year franchise agreement. We have gained a second channel, which we put in place in the new franchise agreement into action, and we've raised a payout for 10 years of pause. As we look to future items, there really aren't many, so I'm wondering what our utility is as a regularly meeting body, and I'm thinking it might be better just to have a, I mean, certainly going to serve as a chair on a has-needed basis if we have an issue where the group needs to meet. I think we can call people together, and we can probably get more people, maybe former members, to serve again in that capacity, but, you know, once a month is important. Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, there wouldn't be time.
Wait, are you saying we actually finished with something?
Well, I don't know.
Sorry, I needed to jump the gun there.
It took seven years to renew the 10-year franchise agreement, so we might start a year or two after that. But I just, I just think that it's kind of pointless to have a regular meeting.
When is the franchise, the full impact of that?
It was sent to Public Act, a service committee, commission committee, and they sent six to nine months after that, they turned it into an action. We're figuring end of summer, early, early fall.
I figured they might be set.
But they don't really, it's like body bottom, I don't really get an idea of what things are going to happen.
Do you provide all board members with community access?
Sure.
And could we put the rules of public access up on our website so that there's no question as to what?
And the policies were approved by both boards, but I think that was a year and a half, two years ago, so there are people who work that out.
They didn't even publish that, and I think they would be up on the website.
They are on the website now. The mission statement, the...
I know, I'm sure.
The policies, the NPPA policies, and the fourth document, the request for scheduling plans.
I've informed the Secretary, Jason, and I...
I found them yesterday, actually, of all the under-public access. There may be some broken links on the site, we can compare.
I think there are some broken links on the site.
I think if it is not there, then I think it's great.
I found them on the miscellaneous files section of the village board.
And I think for the towns, what's up, they should be as, what's up?
I would also like to point out that the Public Access Committee is a joint town-village committee that has worked in harmony and very effectively. I served many years as a town rep, and now a village rep. We work really well together, so, you know, just point that out, so we take some pride in that. Taking off the Public Access Committee?
Just, just that we take action to make it a need committee?
I think that's, you know, what you need to take action or done. I think we'll just not schedule any meetings unless meet, or you can make a formal change to the committee, whatever.
You can guarantee to the committee.
Yeah, whatever your, you know, your process is, I haven't been through this before, so...
We've never had a committee that formally said that the work was done. Usually they just stop meeting and a couple of years later we dissolve them.
We could do that. We pretty much have.
That's not, though, that's not.
We canceled the past two or three meetings.
If the work is done, let's formally vote, dissolve the committee, let's ask the town to do the same, and make a caveat that if a Public Access issue comes up, we call back the same people. I mean, I'm not sure us...
I'd like, I, I don't want to dissolve it because issues have come up that we might need to have addressed, so I would like to formally just keep it at and on and as needed basis, because when you dissolve something, it's awfully hard to be on.
Do we need to do something in order to make the change that is being requested by the...
Is there, in the real world, no. But for record-keeping, it could be useful to have a mark in the minutes that says, "At this point, this work has been completed. We're going to keep going and as needed..." Because honestly, if we do nothing and then just stop meeting because there's nothing to do, it just by de facto stops happening.
Well, we have to go back to speak to the town as well, and I'd like to maybe have a meeting of our committee and recommend to you what we would like you to do with us.
Well, that's just one way.
But, but Jason, I'd just like to say that formally, I understand what you're saying, but Don has said he is going to continue and continue as Chair, and I think out of respect for the boundary that was contributed, we should...
I agree with you, everything up to that point, but just as an anal point of reference is because it's part of my kind of job portfolio to think about these things. Say the next Public Access issue doesn't arise until the year 2017. Now we have, you know, for the past five years, there's this group of people who literally haven't met or talked to each other, who may or may not be interested. So just, I, just as an aesthetic matter, I like having things drop up in a bow, but in the real world, it doesn't matter when we're together. Because at a certain point, at a certain point when we go to Public Access Committee and we ask these folks and no one shows up or responds, well, no, they're going to get a new group of people, and that's how it's going to work in the real world. But it would be nice to have things kind of tied up in a bow in the minutes, but...
You like, you referred to being a process. I'm a process person, and I think when you have a process, then out of respect, if your committee, if he is recommending as he has needed, that should be, and if he wants to resign in 2016, that's his privilege.
So Don's going to bring it back into suggestion, but Rebecca's been trying to jump in.
Yes, okay. We do have other committees, et cetera, who don't meet on a regular basis. The Ethics Committee for one, which Ira, I believe, is still a member of.
As far as I know, yeah.
Okay? And I don't see why we could not have the same situation with, with this committee as we do with the Ethics Committee.
Yeah, I think that that is good as well.
Also, because if there is an issue that comes up, they do have the institutional knowledge and they do have the commitment to deal with whatever does come up.
But I would like to say, this juncture, thank you for everything you have done. Thank you for getting to Congress and getting us...
Up to speed.
Where we need to be on this topic.
So one of my gay friends was just speaking about how amazing the progress had been in, in her lifetime in gay rights, and to think what 2023 was. I don't think so, man, but it's my universe, it's my universe. Miles, miles beyond, yes, yes, indeed.
While we're on the Public Access Committee, because I know you want to talk about something else, there are, everything is on the website. If you click on Public Access TV, then you click on another link that leads you to a fuller page, which is also our website. I don't know, it could all be one page, but one of the links does go to a notice of a public hearing for the zoning board. So just, just letting you know, it's the link that is program agreement for. All the other ones lead to the right thing.
What was the public hearing?
The public hearing, um...
Someone must have put in a program, they need to file that form.
2011.
I can fix that, I can.
I'm sure you can, and I don't think it had anything to do with what you've done either, since it's from then.
It's easy enough to fix that way.
Katie, for those of us who are slightly computer literate, if you could ease it for me, that's why I can get there.
If I can, I will.
Thank you.
Your other comment, Don?
Taking off the Public Access, I have to put another sentence out. There are a lot of issues in front of our community, and I think it's a fair statement to say that the issue of consolidation over the past two years took a lot of time. That's a neutral statement that everyone can agree with, and I think it's, it's fair to say if you spend a lot of time on one issue, you can get time to spend, spend as much time as you might on other issues. I just wanted to see you back some of them, there's a number of them as I see them, and I, here's my, my fear. I have some real concern about the end game as it's now laid out with the consolidation vote. I don't see it as being in harmony with the Constitution that people who live in the town outside the village can vote, and I can't vote even though the Constitution says I'm a member of that municipality. That's a problem at the end game, that is a hard one, and I am afraid that more work and time to be taken looking at the issue of merger, consolidation, or annexation, whatever it might be, without first solving that issue, because if you don't solve that issue in the end game, we're going to have a repeat of, you know, a lot of time spent. So it's really, it's really important to, in my view, to do that. Some of the issues that I would hope would be discussed over the next year would be long-term planning for our sewage plant, which is at or near capacity. We need to know if it's at or near capacity. There is no room to expand on the current footprint.
We currently do 1.2 million gallons a day with a capacity maximum of 1.5. In a storm event, given our infiltration, we'd top 1.6 to 1.7 million gallons a day. So in our reading, or, or, well, before the plant floods completely, you know, we would, in a massive storm event, we may have above capacity, but we are, you're right, it's accurate to say that we are at or exceeding capacity because we'll look in that range.
Well, I got a list here, so let's not talk about it.
All right, sure, of course.
The Riverkeeper right now is doing studies of a bunch of rivers in New York State, and the Walk Hill, you know, it concerns me, and I think we have blinders on it, we don't really investigate the quality of the water in the Walk Hill for kayakers and for people who might, you know, every time we have the ridata and I see people in the water there, you know, it's, we should, we should know what's, what's going on there as a community and as a government. The Bon Tiki View Neighborhood has been there for a while, and there are some dangerous intersections, and there's no stop signs.
We have had requests to resolve that?
Well, I'm just telling you, they're not there, and that's, that's something that I think, you know, I think should, should be done. As a, as a village resident, I have heard repeated strategies and attempts and positions at the town of New Palt's meetings to shift costs of various municipal services to the village or districts or, you know, whatever it might be, and I, I've been concerned that there hasn't been a pushback from the village government. I, I don't want to pay more than I should or have historically for, for town services, and I don't, I don't agree with the logic, but I don't see any pushback from the village board, and I understand why you're trying to do consolidation, maybe it's not the easiest thing to do, but it's, you know, we need to be representatives, villagers in that, in that regard. I see the Woodlands Pond community and its long-term viability as a concern for the village. The village fought to have that as part of the village, and they have real long-term viability issues. Their occupancy rate isn't high enough, but I, I see them as kind of an island, you know, I, I think there should be some active discussion. I don't have the solution, but I think, you know, during the campaign, I mentioned the possibility of having some assistance for veterans to buy in there, or some other program to, to get the occupancy rate up. I think that's, that's a community within our village that, you know, we only turn to election time, and I hope that, and it's not offensive to anyone, it's just my personal view. Getting off the grid, I know there's been some symptomatic discussions, and the mayor's got some things going on, and they're going to, I think moving away from stuff like that is a, is a really important thing. We need to continue and move on and be more prepared for emergencies, the hurricanes and the, and the weather events that happen coming and will come, and I know one thing I heard a lot about a couple of months ago was municipal trash service, looking into whether it's more cost-effective for our residents to have a municipal service to pick up the trash. That's what was done the old days, when you had a milkman too, you know, so it has worked. I don't know if it's viable today, it's kind of, I think it's, it's worth looking at. I'm almost done, I'm almost done. A former village official has made the statement that there has been a shift in how the town snowplowing expenses are, are budgeted, and that the all-town of New Palt's snow removal costs in the amount of $260,000 have been put in the A Fund, and that didn't used to be that way, and I, I don't really want to be absorbing the extra cost to, you know, as a, as a village resident. The A Fund is shared with everybody, and if there are certain things that are just a town expense, they go in another fund. And I know one of the, one of the goals in the discussion of consolidation is a merger of water districts. We can't take that because our, our system's already impassive, but there has been discussion of that. I'm talking about by couple of forms, the services.
Four water districts outside of the system.
Yeah, yeah.
Water districts, one through four.
We have as a town, but they, the government have a, have an issue with sewer six, and I think from a village standpoint, there's been a lot of borrowing from the A Fund, I think, for the, for the purposes in past administrations. Money is owed to that fund, and I think...
On the town side, I remember.
Yeah, yes, yes. They, they owe the joint fund money, a considerable amount, and I, I'm, you know, again, to my view, and I don't mean to color or offend anybody, when everyone's working hand in hand toward a common goal of consolidation, it's very difficult to say, hey, it's, you know, to your partner or the person you, you, you know.
That's an internal funding problem.
But they owe us money.
They don't owe us.
Well, I, that's, you, you're not an official, you have to be property, I could...
Oh, you're a librarian?
Yes, I am, yes, I am. So to, to my view, I think that's an issue, that's a financial issue, and I, I think every mention of, "We want you to pay for more than the cost of the cops," that's the response. What about the sewer money? So I don't like hearing about us paying more for the cops. We've got sewer money that can be resolved in, in, you know, just better for people who live in the village, and lastly, it's, it's just, it's a money issue. There's a town law that says if you have streetlights, you have to create a lighting district, streetlight districts in the town. There are, I wrote down, I closed my pen. Okay, Someris has 10 light districts, Walworths has six. New Palt's has none, which means the people in the town have got their streetlights, that's coming out, where the people who live in the town are also picking up those additional expenses, snow removal, and the streetlights, they want us to pick up police service costs, and I don't have some pushback from my government over the course of next year. Understood? Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don. Any other public comments? None? All right. I move that, I'm sorry, any announcements by the board? All right, and then I move we adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I gave a couple, at least two of them, and I don't want to take them out.
Yeah, no, if there's, everyone has a veto on that, so, yeah?
The minutes have us corrected.
When were the corrections, Sally?
Okay, the corrections, I gave my corrections to Katie.
Okay, they're all spelling and grammar, no meaning?
Actually, Sally asked me to just include the part of the letter from the district attorney, which is, which was a matter of public record of the statement. Could I please add that? It's not, it's not factually incorrect, and I would be happy to add it.
Which, which letter from the D A?
That, that Joe did not...
It wasn't a letter, Katie.
Uh, it's the statement...
I asked him to comment on the article that's here in the paper that said the village attorney did not know elections at all.
Oh, that section, okay, yeah.
And I think...
That's fine, so that's the only substantive change?
Yeah.
Is that, is that, did anyone object to that change to the minute?
No.
All right.
And bond with conditional warranty insurance because they don't have the insurance.
Yeah. Okay. With those amendments, I move we adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Curry?
Please join us. All right, okay. So my name is Neil Curry. I'm educator at Cornell Harbor Extension.
Feel free to come here if you'd like, or, or, you know, walk around the room, you're most comfortable.
I'm going to certainly go over that, that's the materials here that I want to present to the village board members.
Mr. Curry is with the Hudson River S Ray Program Resiliency Project, just so you know, a little bit ahead of time.
So this project is an education and outreach project. It's actually a many-headed project with several different partners and agencies and a couple of different academic institutions, including some in New Palt's. And I'll leave a few other copies here at the table for folks in the meeting to take, If there's any left over.
I actually have one for the record.
Sure. All right, so a couple of others here, Kate, if you want to hang on to them, if anybody else would like them. And I'm gonna stay over here so I can refer to my notes here and the little figures. But, so as I said, I'm an educator from Cornell Harbor Extension, Dutchess County. We started this project earlier this year. It's a contract partnership with the Water Resource Institute, New York State Water Resource Institute at Cornell University and the B B C's Estuary Program. And so there's a team of cooperative extension educators working in several counties on this education project. Dutchess County, folks in Putnam County, Orange County, and some of the green extensions. And we did have some communication with folks in Ulster County. Realized that there's other agencies and other organizations involved. And educating, working with municipal officials and the public on flooding and flood resilience issues. So we've tried to keep in touch with all those folks about not recreating work for anybody, especially ourselves. So we want to acknowledge some of those groups, like the Ulster County Department of Environment and Watershed groups, that we've been in touch with about the projects and the programs that they're working on as well. Purpose of our project is really to get out, first of all, to municipal officials and try and bring some of the resources and things that we're learning ourselves out to the municipalities in the wake of a lot of those years, storms we've had in the last couple of years, Irene and Lee and then Hurricane Sandy. And, and part of the effort was in response to a lot of very long-tensioned responses, post-flood responses. And so we, we understand that there's a lot of pressure on municipal officials to respond. But we also recognize that because of increased precipitation, increased temperatures, we have more storms, we have more frequent storms, we have more intense storms. Some of those traditional ways of responding may not be appropriate. And they're starting to play themselves out in some ways that in the long term, we don't see as, as helping. And that was part of the impetus for the start of this project. So just to provide a little bit of background, I'm going to give you a little bit of the official line about this project that I need to say is a partnership between the New York State Water Resource Institute at Cornell University and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's Hudson Estuary, Hudson River Estuary Program. And this project is a combination of demonstration and education projects, again, undertaken by several institutions, including some U. P. To try and build capacities, build the capacity for municipalities and communities to respond to flooding events and correctly respond to flooding events to reduce their vulnerability to flooding. And I know that's something that folks know about map here in the area. I was looking at this, this map, this area I've flown over earlier. And I hadn't really studied some certain parts of the village before. I was just looking at some maps of the Walkeville Watershed before I came here. And, and someone had mentioned before, the mayor mentioned before, the, the sewage treatment plant. So I wasn't aware before I looked at that, that that's right along the river here. And I expect that that was probably flooded during, during the storm. So there, so there are private property that's vulnerable, but also there's, recognize that there are storage assets and other assets that I'm sure folks are concerned with that. So some, a little bit of the science that we want to familiarize people with is the fact that our climate is changing. And I have some figures to, to make that point. So since 1970, New York State has seen an increase in both average summer and average winter temperatures. So about a two-degree Fahrenheit increase in summer and about a four-degree Fahrenheit increase in winter. So a lot of that has gone, has come from increased precipitation. So some figures on that, since the 1950s, New York has seen a 67% increase in the number of two-inch rainfall events occurring over a 48-hour period. So there, we're not talking about rainfall on the level of Irene and Lee. But as the mayor mentioned before, when we get smaller but still intense rainfall events, that taxes the sewage treatment and I'm sure taxes the drainage system in the village. And so we want to educate folks about some of the things that they can do, some watershed management techniques that they can apply. And we're bringing in a lot of knowledge from other institutions and other agencies to do that through a series of, of events and seminars. So one of the events we had a couple of months ago back in May was an educational forum that brought together folks from, from City Kingston. They're looking at how to deal with their flooding issues on the waterfront there. And that's not just from lost rainfall events, but also from storm surge that comes up in Hudson River. We had some folks from the Northeast Regional Climate Center at Cornell. They came down to talk about the weather problems. They had folks familiar with that. We had a great talk by the E P W head in Delaware County that has a lot of flooding issues and they have to learn the hard way. And the official that, that came was very frank about that, that he had to learn the hard way about how to deal with their culverts and bridges and engineer these in ways that were, that were resilient in the long term. And so another, another tool that we're applying are the seminars and on a direct, actually, folks' attention in the packet to a flyer. So on the right side of this, of this packet, the first thing you'll see is this summary document. That basically goes over some of the same points I was just making a moment ago. And then the next piece of information on that side of the packet is a flyer announcing the next talk in the seminar series, of which there will be more. And so this will feature Bill Leckman from the New York State Flood Safety Management Office. He was a certified floodplain manager. And we've learned a lot from Bill and folks in his office about changes to the National Flood Insurance Program and some of the things that communities can do for the community legal system to alleviate some of the cost of flood insurance and implement some practices that, that, that will, that will reduce communities' vulnerability to flooding. And so that's, that's a incentive for the National Flood Insurance Program to give folks a break on upgrades. So that should be really informative. And the dates and times are listed there. But I would say the one in Dutchess County is going to be held at East Fishville Town Hall on July 7th at 6:30 p.m. And then there'll be another one in Green County, same speaker, same subject, same information, at the Green County Emergency Services Building in Carrick. And I want to just close with a couple of questions for you. If you don't have any questions already. Can I take a quick?
I can, you know, here, we have a big funding cycle for hazardous mitigation.
Right.
Do you have a list of recommended projects that are covered by that?
Yeah, we don't, but I'm aware of that project. So you're referring to some funding that the, that the county government has to work on.
Well, it's really a state grant, right, Jason?
I don't, yes.
The, the big million, five million dollar...
Yeah, that came, oh, good. That came to, to a couple of different agencies, right? Some in Ulster, some in Orange.
And one of the things that we, we thought about, and our engineer has thought about, but Don brought up a very good point tonight, and that was, we had tremendous flooding damage in our sewer plant, which insurance had been paid for. But maybe we ought to start thinking about moving that plant altogether out of the floodlot. Would that be covered?
I, I don't know. That's a different funding stream and a different project than what we're working on. But like I said, we're staying in touch with all that agencies that are working on this and other projects in the area so that we can, you know, we're at least aware, we can, we can provide the information. Because we recognize, we realize that when folks start talking about this topic, it may not always be clear who we're working on and what agency is responsible. And our role in this is really education. That's what Cooperative Extension does.
Yes, it is.
But we try and make it a point to be in touch with everybody who's involved so that we can connect anybody who does have questions with the right people who can give them the right answers to that. So we'll definitely stay in touch with the county government to see what's going on with that project. I know a little bit more about what's going on in Orange County with that than I do in, in Ulster. I'm not quite sure what the plan is for Ulster, although I think a lot of it is going to be geared toward the Lower Sopas. I'm not aware of specific projects in the Walkeville, but that doesn't mean it's a game plan.
That Ulster County cooperative?
No, so not cooperative extension.
That would be Cornell extension. Would you be connecting with them?
Only to the extent that we're aware of what they're doing so we can communicate that with folks like you, if, if they have not communicated that already.
So if we were to call you, what would be the three things about which we would call that would be helpful?
Really, at this point, pretty much anything. Right now, what we're trying to do is develop a, a one-page or, or two-sided fact sheet that has some basic information about different agencies and folks that you can call in a flooding emergency or particularly per flood emergency. So actually, the Cooperative Extension, folks working in the New York City Watershed, Part of the Showtime Streams program, it's a very good document explaining this, but it's more pertinent to communities in, in the New York City Watershed. We've been in touch with them and obtained permission to use that information and adapt it to other communities outside of the New York City Watershed. So it's part of what we want to do toward the end of the summer, the beginning of the fall, is have that document for people. And it'll most likely be, if not in each community, it'll be different, at least in each county, it'll be different folks. There's different folks with different levels of expertise. In some counties, there's a lot of capacity in the Soil and Water Conservation District to deal with a lot of post-flooding issues. In other counties, less so, and there might be other agencies and other people to speak with.
So we will have, hey, if you'll send us that?
We will, we will. And, and one of my questions for the, for the board is how best to stay in touch with the board so we can shuttle that information over to you when it becomes available.
Okay.
And also make announcements about other programs that we're having, like the one we did back in May at the Kari Institute where we brought in several speakers. And keep you informed of the seminar series. This first one that we're doing with Bill Leckman is the first of probably at least four or five that we'll do over the next couple of months here, primarily to municipal officials, but also to residents.
Well, our email addresses are, I don't know if you have everything, but that's probably the easiest way to send us things like this. And we make announcements if, if there's something to announce at the beginning of the meeting so we can always see that. And the clerk is our information disseminator, so.
Okay.
And actually, I had raised my hand to ask, with your permission, may I scan the, the information packet from tonight and put that, connect that as a separate link to our meeting for this evening? So if anybody's looking for it specifically, they'll have a chance. Is that all right with you?
Absolutely. Or you can link over to our website where we have all of those documents scanned and uploaded already.
We'll be happy to.
Or you can do your own copies, whatever you think is most convenient for your, for your residents.
Great, thank you.
Our website is on the, in the information packet. It's actually on a couple of different documents.
That's some issue where resilience.
Yeah, on the bottom.
Yep. And so we posted video from past events. We're posting slides from presentations that we've done. So that information is up there as well, under the outreach section on the website. So if you go to the website, look for the menu item at the top, it says outreach. And all the materials that, that are here in this packet and videos and presentations from other events that we've been doing throughout Hudson Valley will be there.
Are your workshops directed to the general public or are you, and wouldn't you encourage some of our professional staff to attend?
That's a very good question. I'm glad you asked that because I, I failed to mention a training that we're, that we're having to coordinate that's specifically for professional staff at the municipal, at the municipalities. And so the first part of these trainings have already taken place. It's more of sort of a classroom component. But the, I think there will be some folks coming into the second part, which is more, we're actually going to take a field trip.
So you'll have a panel when I go over.
Yes, in fact, I will, as soon as I get out of here, I will email Kate the dates for those. And that's the, that's the second half of what is called the Post-Flood Stream Intervention Training. And that was put together by the folks at Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District. So that's a lot of the content and a lot of the messages that we're communicating to all the municipalities comes from that training. Delaware County has a lot of expertise in this. They've had a lot of flooding issues and they have to deal with it. And so we want to, we want to make that available to other communities who can use it. So the, the, the second half of the Post-Flood Stream Intervention Training, that's the information I'll send to Kate. So when you see that, you'll know what it is.
I have a question. Could you expand just a tiny bit on the community rating system? Just, you know, for those of us who may be interested in attending.
Sure. So I'm thinking about this myself.
Okay.
My understanding, some come out, we don't know a lot of this seminar as well.
Okay.
But I actually went to the bill before and I've met him other times about other topics. But my understanding of it so far is that there are floodplain management practices that communities can engage in that will, and I believe landowners can implement as well, that will bring down the insurance rate for folks that are in the hundred-year floodplain that are required to purchase flood insurance. And this is very important because the rates this year are no longer subsidized by the federal government. The National Flood Insurance Program now, I believe, is charging market-level rates for their insurance. So really, the huge communities and landowners to work with this system to try and get their, their rate down. And it also has the benefit of making the floodplains and the properties, you know, more resilient to future flooding.
Let me get this straight. The federal government has known for decades now that one of the predictable results of climate change is increased flooding. And through their government policies, action, interaction, they've inflicted this upon us. And now that a predictable outcome of their federal policy has come to bear fruit, they yank out, they run from under us in federal support and say that you're on your own. Is that about it?
From a landowner's perspective, that...
And a municipality's perspective.
And I mean, it's, we are one of the biggest landowners along the Walkeville River.
From a landowner's perspective, that I can see where, you know, that's the message that that one is there, you know.
Great.
So that's, that's the situation that we find ourselves in now.
Right.
Bill will be able to speak to this more, in more depth than I will. But I can tell you, just from my experience in Dutchess County, my, my job as an educator is mostly to work with maps and G I S. And so when we had our floodplains, we recently re-capped as in some areas in Ulster County were. So the result of that, because we have lower models based on no rainfall events that are more intense and more frequent, in a lot of cases, the floodplains aren't bigger.
But we knew this was coming, yes?
I think scientists...
I'm asking scientists.
That 67% is actually what the International Panel on Climate Change exactly predicted for the Middle East, was a 60% increase in rain. So that's...
So actually bigger than the I C C.
Yeah. But...
Sorry, we're not putting you in the spot. We're just saying, because the camera's there and there's a report right in front of it.
I, I have a question that you, you may or may not know about this, but I read an article. I don't know if it's, if it was a county thing or if it was a statewide thing, but surrounding Chesapeake Bay, they've started to tax impervious surfaces, which includes roads, driveways, houses, anything that essentially can't absorb water because of the impact on the Chesapeake Bay. And I, I don't know if there's any kind of movement towards this in New York State or if you've heard about anybody looking to do this type of thing in New York State. But when I read about that, I just thought that was just brilliant because all the, all that money is going towards the preservation of the bay. So, you know, I don't know, do you know anything about that?
It's an interesting model, and I don't know that anybody's proposing that in New York. We wouldn't, we're not an advocacy organization, so...
Right, right.
So we wouldn't support that. We would argue against that.
Right, I'm just saying if you have heard of it anywhere in New York or something like that.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but one of the things that we also are making folks aware of when we speak to them and our materials, and actually, I leave the dates on our website. We have a calendar on the website as well with the dates for all these events. As soon as we know effect, my presentation tonight, the calendar as well. So all the communities that are going to do this talk, the seminar, the upcoming seminar, the second part of the Post-Flood Stream Intervention, that's all on the calendar. The other thing we're putting on the calendar is a couple of events that, although they're not part of this project and not part of this, this program, because we're affiliated with Cornell and the information is, and the program is relevant to this topic, we're advertising a program that the Cornell Local Roads Program is doing. They'll meet down in this area in the fall, in a couple of different counties, to do an education program on stormwater management.
Cool.
And they could be well knowledgeable about that if there's any movement to do that in any communities in New York State.
Right.
I expect that that would really be under the municipalities' control. I don't believe the state or county governments would have the authority to do anything like that.
I don't think we would be able to as a village, but...
It's state-wide, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, because we don't, I mean, we're not, you know, like, the county does the sales tax, for instance, you know, we just...
Right.
And counties are strictly, strictly regulated on the number, type, all sorts of things. For sewer plants and water plants, what is flowing into the Chesapeake basin, which is a very large area.
Right.
And it is, it is regulated by the state.
Yeah, that, that, this is the first I've heard, since now. Thanks a lot.
I, I, because somebody, you know, emailed me and I'm to go to that, so that's why I thought of it.
Will you bring us a minute, though?
All right.
Sure, okay.
Neil, anything else? Any other questions for Neil, should ask?
I have a few more questions to do, actually, if you don't mind, just a minute or two more. So I'm gonna blue-mail Kate with our announcements.
Please do, yeah.
And share that information to you. Okay, thanks Kate. Is there anybody else that we should be including in the community, who are trying to do this out of age?
Out of age.
College?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, Creo.
Okay.
Each or.
Okay.
And our campus.
The, the campus also has a sustainability coordinator.
Okay.
Her name is Lisa Mitten, M-I-T-T-E-N.
Okay.
And she would be, she's working directly with people like John Shoup on just everything sustainable with those building design or green infrastructure, or water management.
Okay. So I spoke with Katie Tullman, who said she had made presentations to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she works with Creo on campus.
So I assume she might be in touch with these folks as well? Okay.
They're sort of independent research, they're not direct. They're part of the college, but I think you really want to call them, call them.
She could put you in touch with them, I'm sure.
Two-step.
Okay. Very good, thank you. And are there specific issues that you feel we should be finding out about? The interesting topic about taxing impervious surfaces, we'll, I'll definitely ask folks at Cornell. If anyone knows about that.
Well, I think letting us know when the workshops for professional staff is here.
Okay. So training for professionals.
I was asking you about burning the sword plant, isn't quite where you want to be.
I mean, there's, there's definitely some other things, like I, there was a heavy rain, I don't know if it was last week or a week and a half ago, but I was the only person walking around in it. People driving thought it was insane, it was clear. But I walked through Hasbro Park, I walked all around the community and checked out all the stormwater management. And it was, it was clear that the drains just aren't even in the lowest points, whether it's on a road, or in Hasbro Park, there were six inches of water everywhere. You know, it was like a pond, not a park. But so, you know, I, and I, and I saw some new construction sites where they, it were pretty recently built, and there was a driveway put in, and there was a drainage culvert underneath, and it was at capacity. You know, it was, and I just thought, well, this is, what we're building new, and this is at capacity. We clearly need to not just rethink, but begin to think about this at all. And I guess I was wondering, is there anything, like, in terms of, you know, where you move a storm drain, five feet over, so that it's at the lowest point, where it would just be a significantly more effective spot for a drain, drain, you know? Things like that. I don't know if there's, like, any funding sources to go, go to for things like that, or, you know, because we, we've talked a lot about more of the green infrastructure projects, and rain gardens is something that keeps coming up with this board, but just, I, I saw things like that, where, you know, you go through a parking lot, and the water's pooling over here, but the drain is over here. So it's just not, it doesn't seem to have made sense. And is it because we just haven't thought about these things, the way we start, are starting to?
Well, there may be a couple reasons for that. That may be part of it, but also we're just dealing with a different precipitation regime.
Oh, well, it's clearly the volume of rain in the shorter amount of time, absolutely.
So a lot of the engineering, you know, this all from, from DPW and Delaware started off his talk, with all the great stuff he learned in engineering school, and all the beautiful things he started to build in the county after these flooding events. The next flooding event came, and it was gone.
Right.
So some of the, the rainfall models and the engineering methods that, you know, folks have been taught, either might just have been based on some lack of information in the past, or it's just that the reality has changed. So one of the components of this project, it's not a cooperative extension piece, and I forget at which, might be at Syracuse, might be at, one of the research teams are working on, trying to rescale this down to what they call right-size culverts. I don't know that they're looking at stormwater infrastructure in sort of a dense village area, like you're talking about.
Right.
Like, where we place these things, and how do we figure out how big we need to make them to convey all the water? But they're definitely looking at road crossings with culverts. So if I find out any more information about that, or once that, the results of that comes out, that's information I'll forward to Kate as well.
Cool.
Problem solving also, it seems to me, has to address itself specifically to geological impact. Now, New Paltz, for the most part, sits on the fisher, which is very non-absorbing, okay? And so there may be a different suggested approach for a community like ours than one where the soil is very deep before it's been in the water foundation. And that gives us much more absorption. But it's, I can think of a simple problem. Most of the houses in New Paltz have some pumps. I don't know how many years ago, but you're no longer, you no longer put your sun pump in sewer system, all right, and pump it out. But pumping it out, also in a major rainstorm, is contributing to runoff. So it would be very good if somebody has started to think about solutions for those kinds of problems, because we're contributing to it ourselves in that sense. So, Ariana, go.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Okay, and then finally, what happens the week would be best to try and schedule our events so that they don't conflict with, with board meetings or other, or other meetings? So that's the best of our ability to try and accommodate lots of different town and village boards.
The village board and the school board both meet, meet on Wednesdays. So it's, you know, alternating Wednesdays, but it's always on Wednesdays, and the town board meets on Thursdays, so maybe like a Monday?
Pass Thursday.
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay. And those are alternating weeks for both boards?
Alternating weeks for the village, village board and the school board, the town meets the third and fourth Thursday, so, you know, second or, or first or second Thursday would probably work for them better.
But you're always going to have a conflict, because the planning board meets.
The first and third Tuesday.
The second and fourth Tuesday, the ZBA meets, or the ZDA meets the second Tuesday.
The board of officials.
And the third, so meets.
So.
Look at our calendars.
Okay.
Yeah, the village, village website has a calendar, so, but, but that's just the village, is the town website, I think, is still down, last I looked, so.
This is a hot place, meetings every night.
Okay.
True.
So my business card is in those packets as well, so free, feel free to call me or email me if you have any questions.
Yeah.
Here's my card.
Okay.
You can feel free to contact me.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the questions I have for you, if you want to have any further.
Thank you, Neil.
No, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
So I would be interested in going to the event on July 25th, if anyone else here is?
I, I am. I was actually looking at my calendar and trying to figure out the 17th or the 25th, so, but both of us probably need a ride. So if you get to coordinate someone else.
So does the board need to give permission, is it something the board needs to give permission for, or?
No, because it's, it's free, so, we don't need any funding for it. I think it was more just an announcement for the rest of us, right?
Right, true. It does go up in the schedule, so it's got to come.
All right. Number six, since I put this in the agenda, let's just call a spade a spade with this one. At the very last second, after multiple public hearings.
Thank you.
Thinking of, on the budget, the prior board decided that the mayor, position of mayor is a part-time, with a part-time salary. Two of the four board members who made the decision have been replaced, obviously. If you watch the video, you'll see Arianna and Sally, as well as Brian and Stuart, but they're not as relevant because they're not on the board now. When, explaining why they made the decision, if you put aside the personal insults, if you put aside the unsubstantiated rumors, there's no logic, reason, or evidence given for the decision that they made, at all. It's their personal whims, it's their personal opinion, and that's not only affects me, but affects the next mayor, and possibly the mayor after that. It's a decision about who should hold office, and what economic class of people can. The board also made the claim that, the prior board, I apologize, made the claim that this last-second decision by four individuals, down to the dollar figure, with publicly prepared statements, was done with no prior discussion. Despite the fact that it's come to my attention that trustee Bosco at least told at least one person at least a month prior to that vote that they were going to reduce the mayor's salary. So, on its face, it appears to me this was, this decision was made not only with no logical basis, without any evidence or proof to back up the claims, for example, a word load analysis that showed the labor required to be mayor, and the hours required to do so, et cetera, et cetera. And the question before the board now, we got a message from the village attorney this afternoon or yesterday, I can't recall, clarifying that in his words, to paraphrase his words, whatever decision the board makes is not anything about rescinding a prior decision, but because a new board is taken, has been seated as of June 1st, that it would be a firmer decision, a decision by this board as to what the mayor of New Paltz should earn, whether that person's me or somebody else. In the real world, of course, everyone knows my position, everyone knows Arianna and Sally's position. Rebecca, I think, has made some comments, and Tom has made some, but really, this discussion's really not even involving me, Rebecca, and Sally, because we've already hatched this out, I think. But really, a matter of the public hearing from Rebecca and Tom, what their opinion is as new board members faced with the decision to make this decision anew at my request, as opposed to having to revisit an old decision. And I know it's a minor, hair splitting point, but it's important. Because it's important to reiterate that every new board, after every election, is not bound by the decisions of the prior board, that everything is on the table, literally, can be revisited. And I'm not really looking for an argument tonight, but I just thought that because we had one public discussion, we had one last-minute meeting on a Friday afternoon at 1:00 that the public wasn't at and wasn't filmed, if there's anything publicly the board would like to say, that's, I'd at least figure it's fair to give them a chance to say it. So with that, especially first with Rebecca and Tom, with whoever, open the door to whoever else. But a decision was made, and that decision was to take no action, and I thought the public deserved a reason why. Unless the reaction is no reaction, let's sweat, right? Any conversation, any comment at all from? No?
I have comments, I'm just wondering if anyone, yours does as well?
Well, this is a board petition, a public petition.
Were you opening it?
I meant, I meant.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This year, no, I'm sorry, not this, this.
Sure.
And obviously, what I'm saying is, I don't think I have to say this, but might as well do it, is my personal opinion, this and yada, yada, yada. Obviously, everyone up here would have a different take on everything that's happened, but I think it's fair, I think they would get that this is my opinion of what's happening, and I'll have to explain that, but.
Well, from, from my point of view, you know, I was utterly new board member, confronted with what seemed to be an overly contentious issue. And what I, my approach to this was to attempt to determine whether there was anything that was illegitimate from my point of view. And I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a guy. And so I took our attorney's opinion, and I contacted and had several discussions with the NICOM attorneys. And I was convinced after those discussions, and with the opinion of the counsel we had, that there was no illegitimacy in the decision made by the prior board.
But do you think it was a fair decision? That's some of the now, some revisited, yeah.
Yeah, no matter, I would have to take that.
Of course.
Into consideration in a different state of mind, and make a different judgment about that. So I came to a conclusion that the board acted within its capacity at that time, and that was the reason for taking no additional action. So that's my explanation of why no additional.
All right. Well, first of all, I had a lot of ideas during the campaign, during which Tom and I were elected, following, rather, and there were ideas that were brought forth, I was running with Don Kerr at the time, and we both agreed on a good number of projects that we would really like to see come forward. And in the past month, so many things have happened that really make me feel as if there are many projects that I really want to see come forward. A lot of the solar initiatives that we've talked about, municipal waste, the, you know, solar streetlights, a municipal energy system, that really speak to things that we have been talking about, really, for over the past 10 years, since I was initially elected, as well as Jason. In the past 10 years, technology has changed so dramatically. We have those solar panels on the DPW garage that are literally antiquated at this point. The technology behind solar has come along such a vast distance from those panels. And, you know, watching the news and seeing things happen related to our fossil fuel system, things like, you know, a Midwest reservation having an oil spill on their, on their, you know, impoverished community. And then you see there was some other, I don't remember which state it was, but there was a whole nother issue where there was another fuel spill in, in the community. And then in Canada, you have an entire town blown apart by a train carrying more fossil fuels through their community. I don't even know what the death toll came to, but, you know, it's, I'm, I'm sorry that I know these things may seem so far away from us, and they are, but the interests of our community, I have always felt, to be one that is innovative, caring, and one that really has the interest of, of being a model community, being a progressive community, you know, breaking away from that reliance on things like pesticides and fossil fuels and cleaning up a river. And I want to work on these things, but I honestly feel that it would be very difficult to work on all of these things without a full-time mayor. And I've always felt that we should have a full-time mayor, because it's, it's what we can do, and it would be in our, in our best interest, as well as the best interest of our country, because we can do so many things to be, you know, a model. And, and we've done it before, we've done it in, whether it be in civil rights, or whether it be in putting those solar panels on the DPW garage. And I really feel that the previous board took many steps backwards, and I feel that everyone on the board had their own reason for taking those steps backwards, but we are a new board. I feel that we can work cooperatively, which means all of us working cooperatively with our mayor, and I, I don't see any reason why we could not challenge him and work with him in order to put all these projects forward and, and make them happen. I mean, you know, it's like $65,000 a year that we give to Central Hudson for our street lamps, and it's like, why can't that go into a solar project? And I, I've put a lot of. And I've put a lot of thought into it, and, you know, at first, I've heard things from everyone, and I personally would prefer to see our board put forth a resolution to reinstate the previous salary that was cut back by the previous board. And also, just to add to that, we have had a number of people come out to our public meetings, especially soon after the vote to rescind the salary, reduce the salary, and I really have not seen a lot of public comment against the initial raise that was given to the mayor, and I certainly did not see a lot of objection as far as the whole issue of returning it to the previous salary. You know, there was a letter that was written by a number of community people who read the letter at one of the more recent board meetings, and, you know, if there are people who feel that it should be a part-time position, I would love to see you come out and voice your opinions. So far, we have not seen that.
Sarah?
I think so.
Sally, there are any, anything, or just? No need to, okay. All right, well, thank you, I just want to give the kind of soapbox. Yeah, Ira?
I just had a comment, it says public, so I just had a comment.
Briefly, if you would.
Yeah. The board did what they did, I'm not going to get into that, because on this one, we didn't pull over, we, you know, people like we have nothing to say. Nobody shows up, nobody shows up to meet except the radicals, we know this, you have a dozen people that are in favor of this, they'll come out and they'll yell and scream and the board will say, ah, nobody else came out, people don't come out. I don't know what the situation is, the board has to make some decision. I just have one question about what I'm ready to, and that was the only thing I have, I'd just like to get my own answer. In item six, you cited a lot of cases, right? Supreme Court of Superior Division responded.
Two controllers and a village attorney.
Right, okay. Those, I would presume, are all opinions in favor of the board not doing what they should have done, or something like that?
Town law, being voted not.
Well, that's irrelevant, because it's actually municipal home rule law that's being started in a town law. The Supreme Court is, Supreme Court, of course, in New York is a county level court, not the highest, but from a different department than ours, so there's no Supreme Court judge in our department that's ruled this issue one way or the other. One out in Buffalo said, agrees with me, and this, well, is not agrees with me, I agree with this.
Exactly.
The court decision, the two controllers' opinion, are what I read, that made me bring this back to the board table, that said, you need a local law and a referendum to lower a salary, no matter how you raised it in the past. The attorney, the village attorney's opinion says, basically, that it's a gray area, that yes, this controller's opinion just is a fourth department case, but because zones don't have legal precedent, it's not legally binding, but also because there's no, no one has ruled the other way at all, it's kind of like, it's what we've always done versus what a judge in the controller has said, is what it comes down to, and the bottom line is that because it's up in the air, it's going to require a judge to decide which side, which, where to come down. And that's where my personal decision of to file a lawsuit comes in, is we need a judge's opinion, because it's not cut and dry.
Yeah, no, I agree with you with what you're saying.
I'm sorry, I apologize, did I answer your question?
Huh?
Did I answer your question? That's all.
You're right. The, I presumed, and maybe wrong, that these were all opinions in favor of the position, and what I was curious about is whether they researched, did they research everything, or did they call and just research opinions in favor?
I spoke to...
Okay, I don't care which way it goes.
No, I'll answer you, I spoke to three different attorneys, everything was researched, the issue is that there's very little, there's not a lot to research, you know what I mean? You're looking at, basically, these two controllers' opinions, this case and one or two other ancillary cases, and that's the entire kind of, of town with, of this issue.
It's a question.
Yeah.
It's kind of like this stuff.
Please, yeah.
When the attorney was asked by this board to research the matter, he was asked to research both sides, because the New York State Constitution says you can neither increase nor decrease a salary during the term of office. And I can say this, because I was the one that moved, who made a full-time job and to increase the salary. Did I make an illegal action? I don't know. And we only got one side of the opinion from our village attorney, he failed to give, or find, or look for, for whatever reason, the other side.
The village attorney gave, the village attorney gave every, every aspect of this, he didn't omit anything.
And that's what I'm curious about.
Yeah, he didn't omit anything.
Yeah. His opinion is public, because he released...
Everybody in this board will make their own decision based upon their own agendas or whatever, or however, because the people really don't have any say in anything, unfortunately. No, I mean, because, you know, how many people eat at four or six, it's no big deal. But I just was curious when I saw these opinions, whether they were all slanted opinions that the board was reading, or whether they were, and you answered my question.
Yes, Ira, they were all slanted opinions, the matter's the green direction, is the only question.
When I spoke with NICOM, they, they said that as long as the salary is not reduced below what it was when we entered office, it is perfectly legal.
That's, I'm saying, that's so big.
And there are, like, everyone said, there's conflicting legal opinions, hence the need for referee. Aaron, and then we should move on.
Yeah, just to clarify, you said you had a meeting, that this was discussed in executive session at some point?
There was our last public meeting, when, when in the executive session, I was there for a part of it, and I left with a request of the trustees for the majority. Two days later, we had that special meeting on a Friday afternoon, so the board could continue, because it just got too late, you know, you don't make good decisions at, too late at night, so the board wanted a meet when they were fresh, to finish the conversation, as of on a Friday afternoon, and it's something during tonight, because we don't, it's a meeting Friday afternoon, so have the issue raised at the regular formatted time, that's all.
So did your backup to the resolution on the table now, or is this a mute point?
No, no motion is made. This is discussion only at this point.
Okay. So there wasn't, you didn't decide anything in that executive session, it was just a discussion?
No decision was made at any time.
And out of public, you're airing what your thoughts are, your...
Well, especially because Tom and Rebecca haven't voiced anything on this issue, so now, there's, we're all on the record, and we'll see what happens next.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Yeah, I mean, is the resolution coming forward?
Is it clear enough that we can move on?
Well, Rebecca was, was saying a lot of things, but it sounded like she was asking the board to put forth a resolution, I had no, I...
I don't, I didn't hear a motion, what I heard was, theoretically, this could be a good idea, that's what, not fleshed out, nothing in detail.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, moving on.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, yes, you had something?
Is there action on this agenda?
There's no motion on the table, we don't need any action.
No motion on the table?
No motion on the table, moving on.
Is no action?
Discussion only, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ira, and very good questions, thank you. All right, number seven, actually, well, let me ask, is there anyone else here presenting specific? There's only a couple items left, but is someone here, you don't count her, you got to say. All right. So seven, yes.
Nancy wants a housekeeping issue.
What's that?
The board made a motion on June 15th, on June 12th regarding the easement, and she just needs you to formally talk about the cost.
I got it, thanks.
She just needs it for them.
Yep, all right, so Sally specifically, this draft of the local law of the ENCC, I think, there were a couple of language changes, do they meet, what we discussed, I'm sorry, I think I was... There was a bit about having one of these groups of three folks on planning board issues, what were the other, wasn't anything really major, it was like two or three things?
Give me one second, I highlighted what I, what the board said.
I just want to make sure the language is what people were thinking of before we move on.
You were very clear that you...
Are we talking about the environment?
Yeah, the environmental, yeah.
The board.
Yep, we added in the suggestions from the last board meeting, and I want to make sure that that meets people's needs.
The, in, in the packet, seven dash one, of the things that were discussed, you wanted to make sure that it was not referred to as the ENCC, and since it wasn't referred to anywhere in the law, I didn't have to change anything. Nine dash three, one of the five voting members must be appointed as a liaison to the Village, Village of New Paltz Planning Board and must attend to planning board meetings, which is Sally's point.
Nine dash three C is the new addition.
Okay, and what was Sally's point?
That should, that's...
One of these, one of these groups of three ENCC folks, one kind of cell should deal with planning board, reviewing planning board applications, doing planning and land issues, so I want to make sure that language is, hits the point that was made.
Okay. With that, actually, that section, I feel that it should say, must is such a strong word, it sounds like, you know, unless you're on your deathbed.
Shall be.
Yes, shall, but also...
Nine dash three C.
Yes.
Under membership.
And shall be in attendance, blah, blah, but also put in that they are also responsible to seek an alternative in case of an absence.
Well, that's a question I've got, but I, can we start at the top? I would be more comfortable if the legislative intent was rewritten.
Yeah, I was more, I kind of went poetic with that, and I'm not sure, I mean, it's what I really mean, but I'm not sure if it's what I should say in the law.
I believe in everything that you wrote here, but I didn't think it's appropriate for us to criticize the state and federal levels of government in our legislative plan.
What, give me some, give me some guidance on what, how that should be rewritten. Just drier, is that all it needs to be, just more outline and drier, like what? So why not have poetic legislative?
Society, and in particular, the Village of New Paltz, it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare, residents, and building, and environmental policy board be established.
Yeah.
What, nothing with the rights of nature?
I think the first two paragraphs are a little too poetic for legislative intent.
One thing that's very difficult for me is to edit something that's on a piece of paper.
I'll cut and paste this to send to people.
Yeah, you could do that.
And I see, I love to edit, auto copy.
Oh, gosh.
That's a generational thing.
I do have a, I do have a Word version of this, I can just send you the copy tomorrow.
Yeah, just send that out.
Yeah, you can do that.
I don't, I mean, you know, the legislative intent, as far as I know, unless it tells me otherwise, doesn't really have much legal teeth, unless I guess we get sued for something.
Use the third paragraph and be done with it.
Ah, well...
I think, I like the idea of sending out the Word version.
I'll probably do that first thing in the morning.
Else it's a poisonous...
Under membership, Jason, I think, I understand where you're going, but alternates generally need, in the absence of a seated member, that person serve.
You know, though, I like the idea, well, but I like the idea that an alternate has more of a job, like, because this is...
As a member in training with a portfolio, is what I'm thinking.
I think it's very possible that an alternate can also be the chair, so to speak, of one of the three policies.
Right.
But it needs to be kept separate and independent, I believe, because an alternate on the planning board fills in...
Well, that's the envision for this, too, say, you're, say, you're in charge of a, of a ENCC, for everyone who's not...
Can we go back to A?
For anyone who's not, the idea of this is, right now, we have an Environmental Conservation Commission, which is five people appointed to just fix the environment. What this idea is, is say, take that, change the name to Environmental Policy Board, and have five groupings of three people each, one formal member who gets the vote on everything, and then each member has two kind of alternates in this language that help them work on a specific policy. So, for example, you're not appointed to the ENCC under this law, you wouldn't be appointed to just fix the environment, would you say Sally Rhodes is appointed to ban all pesticides in the Village of New Paltz, and Rebecca and Ariana are appointed to help with that?
You have just said what needs to be said.
Well, that's what I'm...
Rewrite it exactly that way in your...
It's clause.
Just don't call them alternates, excuse me.
Don't call them alternates.
Call them something else, just call them that, that research, because the other thing, too, is this, is that...
It's the five.
I wanted two people who might have to commit to one year, that's all I wanted.
I have five commissioners.
Yeah.
Each commissioner has two long tiers.
That's 15 total.
That's 10. Five times two.
What else?
Two, two more, ten more.
Five times three.
Five and ten.
Commissioner, commissioner plus two, two associates.
This language doesn't say that. And you need to clean up the language. What you said, what you just explained, is what you mean, and that's what you should state.
Right.
Can I suggest, though, I think that Rob's rules does not require...
That's not Robert's rule.
Wait a minute, let me say something.
What did you say?
That's okay, I don't care about that. Rob's rules does not require that committees be constituted only of members of the body, which it isn't. So you could have this notion of having five people who are in charge of certain areas, and they can list people from the community who would be members of their committees, whether it be limited to 10 people, or more.
I thought this is a minimum, actually, but, yeah.
Basically, what you want to do is have five commissioners, two alternates, so in the absence of...
Per commissioner, yeah.
Okay? Then what you want to do is the five commissioners each are in charge of a policy.
Right. Is that, you don't, you don't think that's what this says?
And they form a subcommittee.
Technically, a task force.
All right, anyway, so, all right, so here's, all right, here's the thinking, forget the jargon, here's what I want. All right, so a normal ENCC term is, environmental board is two years. We appoint, say Sally, all right, we won't use the word, say, we appoint Don Kerr as one of our five formal, full-voting environmental commissioners, or whatever, and he's in charge of, say, making all of our electricity 100% clean by the next, in the next 12 months.
I'm just going to put in two water staffs.
Even in 10 months, great, perfect. So, the thinking is, is that, given the sheer youth of our community and the turnover, having two assistants for Don, who are only committed to one year, while Don agrees to head the project and serve for two, might be useful, because then when Don sits down, you got one of the researchers step up, that's the thinking.
But he should be allowed to have three people if he wants them.
This is why I'm going to talk to the access board.
Solve your own problems, yeah. All right, wait, do you, do you want to just, do you want to send me specific languages? Because Katie's going to start the most important.
I just want to make sure that we're in agreement. My suggestion is that either all five rotate to the planning board, or it be one specific...
One, one of the five tasks.
Then you only have four tasks and...
Four, four plus planning, yeah, four plus land use.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, four plus land use.
But if, if I'm going to the planning board and I'm representing on the planning board, that is my job.
Right, yes, exactly, that's the thinking.
Do you want me just to...
Yeah, you want to just add, add in some of the chain letters?
I have something completely separate.
All right, what, is it about A?
Yes, because oftentimes, when we start up a committee, we have staggered terms, so that...
Oh, right, staggered terms.
If every board, every board member has, every commissioner has a two-year term, then in two years, everyone's going to be up, so you should have, two of the people have a three-year term, and three of you have a two-year...
Right, all right, so I'll add staggered terms there.
Yeah.
Staggered terms.
Exactly.
All right, anything else, because the little things, you can just send me, I mean, just add, edit it in Word and email it to me, and I'll try to pull it in.
Do you want to gather the graphs?
Just send it, send me the graphs, and I'll pull it in and do it.
Change this and send it out to Ariana and Rebecca and Tom, to add whatever they wanted, and then the...
That's fine, if you want to do like a chain letter thing, that's fine, too.
Because I think that would make it easier.
And then just make sure it ends with me, and then I can make sure it all is consistent, and we're good. I'll do the last edit.
You know, I actually didn't understand, like, it is word, I mean, now I totally see what you were saying here, but when I read four, I was like, each commissioner should be responsible for the completion of at least one policy, but I thought that that was kind of a heavy burden, but now that I see that they're going to have help, each commissioner...
Each group of three would do one thing a year, yeah, at least, minimum of one thing a year, yeah.
Jason, I don't think nine five is illegal. I don't think anybody can accept on behalf of the village board, they can recommend...
That, that is actually from state law.
I, I think we don't want to, no matter what... I, I think we don't want to, no matter what.
When authorized by resolution of the village board.
Somebody wants to make a gift.
Well, you look at nine-five, I realize I misnumbered them, there's two nine-fives.
Oh.
It goes from nine-three to nine-five, and then nine-five again.
Oh, I'm the second nine-five.
So, but look at the first phrase, when authorized by resolution of the village board, that's, they're gonna do it when we get in.
When authorized by resolution of the village board.
They may accept it. So, for example...
You know, why would I authorize something?
You know why? Because the town did just that. When they passed the open space bond, they authorized the open states committee to accept properties identified by the whatever, that's all it comes down to.
The board still has to accept it, not...
Do you think it's redundant, or not the power to...
Let me get more and see what you think.
Yeah, okay. I'll just put an asterisk next to that.
All right.
And the reports thing seems doable, like, I tried to have it in two phases, one for budget time, one for policy time, does that make sense to people?
Well, it's a little contradictory with the first nine-five-four, because you're adding each commissioner responsible, but it's gotta go to the first degree for your reading of the board in May, so I think the date...
So, other than dates agreeing, you think the concept is all right to have?
I think the concept is...
How about May 1st and, like, November 1st or December 1st?
And, you would be saying, if you were membership, anything about secretary, and all of a sudden, secretary appears.
I wasn't sure that...
If you have the part-time employee...
That would be, yeah, because we gave that to every board, 500 every year.
That should be stated.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure you want that in law.
I don't know, you know.
No, if it doesn't work, so why don't we just...
At least eliminate the reference, if not, adding it in.
June 1st of each year, a report shall be filed, and then it says you're saying who is going to be doing it.
Right, good idea.
You see what I'm saying?
Have only one report per year?
All right, well, I think...
Have only one report per year, is what you're saying?
No, no, I'm saying that you don't want to say in the law that there will be a part-time employee secretary, even though for this year, we are going to experiment with that.
Right, right.
Okay? So, rather than having to go back and change the law, should you, for budgetary reasons or anything else, take, do something differently. I think the term secretary just ought to be left out, and just says that a report will be filed, we don't, aren't going to say either.
All right, so can we try to get these things to each other by next week? So, I think, one more meeting discussion for the last highs and lows.
I've just seen it, there may be the word document.
Beautiful.
Is it okay with everybody if I have mine out to you all by Monday?
Yes, yes, perfect. All right, thank you all, we don't need to catch on that.
Have a question, too, is...
Yes, please.
Is there a reason why others do that?
I don't know why, actually.
Were you filming in here or something?
Don, are you volunteering for the...
Thanks, Don.
Sorry.
Shh. Thank you for doing it.
He said ten months, he was gonna...
I know, I heard him, I just wanted it on the record.
Wait, what was that? What was on?
Well, I'm talking, I just want to come up with the next item, you know, once a year inspections for rental properties, it's really easy to put lipstick on a thing for once a year. I think the real effect depends to have it twice a year, or at least break the law, you can do it twice a year, so people are not comfortable, you have the good landlords in towns and not so good landlords in towns, and you have the ability, even if you're unfunded, to say you don't expect twice a year, you know, you can't get it with the kids or students or...
It's actually too damned, but go ahead.
You can handle that, of course, by saying at least.
At least.
Right. The biggest...
Yeah, I agree.
I think the biggest thing in terms of our ability to do the rental inspections, with the number of rental properties we have in the community, if our building department didn't take any days off, except the ones already given, and no sick time, they'd have to do 4.5 per day, so...
Which is actually about right.
Maybe we need to hire, you know, somebody else.
Well, we have a half-time building inspector right now, so we should maybe reconsider that.
So maybe we should have another half-time.
It's not as good to do some new subjects.
Hey, I didn't bring it up.
So peddling, it's soliciting?
Yeah.
Really peddling?
Who's taking the lead on this one?
What, peddling and soliciting?
Yeah, I don't, because I don't actually know. It's on here all the time.
Maybe it's mine that requested, Jake.
We don't put it on her.
I did, I'll say that I did it, I did request the change, and Joe has given us what I, from a very narrow point of view, think is great, but that's, I have a very narrow point of view with. I came to my board and said, this is what your citizens are telling me, give me some direction.
Can I just say, Katie, a lot of the questions I have are legal questions, which require presence of the attorney.
Do you want to table this again till next week, until Joe's here?
We can talk about it then.
Because, I mean, I don't think you can answer some of these.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, there are just, you know, parking lots of schools, one danger is parking lots of schools.
I mean, I think, you know, there are a couple of things that I could speak to, but don't, that aren't necessarily legal, that much more on the board decision, but, yeah, we may as well.
Have him here, hear his arguments, pro and con, but he seems to make...
I have no problem with that. I, my, I guess my biggest question, because we extended permits until the...
July, the month of July, so we would...
Through the end of the month, basically. So, so even if we set a public hearing, even if we lug the law next meeting on the 24th and set a public hearing, it wouldn't, the public hearing wouldn't be till August, so do we want to, again, extend the permits so that the ones who already have permits are not currently affected?
I'd rather extend the permits and have a decent, correct law.
Yes. I mean, I lean to that as well, I'm just asking.
We use the term, the business of vending merchandise. I can see a whole issue coming up with vending machines at the bus station, or anywhere else they are in town. We should be using the business of selling merchandise, it's not vending. Just because you're a vendor, you're still selling, you're not vending. There is some language problems here. Rebecca, believe me, that looks like beauty.
I... Well, I think that, I think what that means is...
Very, very important is we have...
Well, why don't we wait until Joe is here?
Yeah.
Can I ask that we put this on until Joe is with us on the...
Yeah, sure, 20th.
Fourth.
Fourth.
Next meeting.
We have some statements by him in regard to this proposed local law. Could we, instead of waiting until the next meeting, ask him to review what he has written, and to respond to any questions that are sent to him, if Sally has a question or...
Well, the problem I see with that is, that when it is a group discussion, something Ariana may ask about might trigger something for me to ask about. Which, if we are each individually directing questions, we're not hearing the benefit of our colleagues' viewpoints.
We'll all be together, we'll be safe.
Oh, you mean, send the questions in advance? And he'll answer them at the meeting, got it?
Oh, I, I hope you're misunderstanding. All right, so we're sending our questions.
Send information over to the table.
I think we should have...
Is that all, Jason?
That's really wonderful.
Okay.
All right, so moving on to number nine, I know, as we've said before, that there is, there are some comments from the Landlords Association, but I'd like to spread that out over two meetings, so just kind of deal with the kind of prima facie on its face, what do you think about this law about rental property inspections? And then, next meeting, talk about and react to the landlord association's responses.
Well, it's not their response, it is a committee's amended version of it, and I think...
I know.
Proper, what I could suggest, Jason, is, there are some things in your law, which I think would fit, I believe would fit very nicely into a certain section, and rather than my saying, that's a horrible thing, independently, I would like to say that, let's move this to this section of your...
Well, what section it's in is less concerning me than the legal language itself, or the impact.
You see my point, I'll give you an example. You have a section on displaced tenants. The proposed amended law doesn't allow somebody to rent period the end if building is not, or the apartment or whatever, the rent is not in proper condition. So, what happens, we also deal with people who don't register, which is missing in your law. So, say you're a landlord, and you want to rent, and you failed to register.
It's covered in the penalties for offenses.
Yeah, pretty much. And, so, I find out, I'm the building inspector, and Rebecca rats on you and says, did you know that Jason owns a building, he is renting building, because it's not registered? At that juncture, it would seem to me, not only would the person incur the fine for failing register, but if the building inspector goes and finds the five major things are missing, at that juncture, displaced tenants, you're going to be...
All right, let me walk through this. I do, but I want to make sure that you're right first, because, all right, in terms of...
Want to go through...
Not registering it, so I'm looking at 129-7A, enter property used either in whole or in part to exchange housing for either money or barter, so I'll register the property each year with the building inspector. And you combine that with 129-14, penalties for offenses, every person shall fail to comply with the provisions, chapter shall be subject to prosecution, yada, 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 and then go into the details. So, and I'm missing something?
Yeah.
Where is it? Because that seems to cover, that seems to cover the, you're trying to sneak through without registering your rental property. At least half of that concern, is that true?
We just did it a different way, and made it more complete within each section, rather than making it difficult for somebody to hop, skip, and jump, and conclude that maybe that means this. We spelled out what it exactly means.
All right, well, listen, if it's, look, if it's possible to talk about this law on its face, I'd like to, if we can't talk about it without reference to the landlord association's rewrite, then that's fine.
What I'm trying to do is talk about your law, and then tell you the suggested amendment, if there is one in a particular section.
Right, okay.
Does that seem like a logical thing to do? In other words, reag...
Well, that's what I'm asking, because, because you have to understand, from my point of view, having put, I mean, this is the sixth draft of this that I wrote, and lots of consultations, I think this is a good law. And the landlords' associations' revisions, I think weaken it, and I think that it's obvious, look, I don't think anyone is surprised by that, and I think that they're right to advocate for their position. I guess, first off, I'd like you, I'd like to know where the board sees the weaknesses in this law, first, and then if the landlord's revision addresses it, great, because there may be other, other ways to address a flaw in what I wrote than the landlord association wrote. So, that's why, I mean, if it's not...
They did write it.
They may not write.
If it's not, if it's not a plausible way to go about the conversation...
They argued for things that we said no to.
Okay. If it's not a plausible way to go about the conversation, that's fine, it just seems to me common sense to me to have two separate discussions, one about this, one about that.
It's just very difficult to have been a part of the rewrite without referencing the rewrite when discussing it. It's like when you know, when you know something, how do you not talk about it, you know what I mean?
Why don't we start, because Rebecca and Tom weren't here last time when we first talked about this, and weren't here, so maybe it'd be good for all three of us now to get their kind of, a second set of eyes on this.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, what do you guys, Tom, Rebecca, what do you think? I know last time, this was confusing, because there was so much change from what we have now, mostly carving out things that have never, haven't been enforced in decades. So this was as much as a simplification, and was hopefully a streamlining of something that's effective. What's, that's the intent, what's your opinion?
Egos.
And let me, actually, let me take, because this is worth reminding, the kind of the model that I used to write this, this came out of, actually, when Kurt was hired, because having a planner for the first time forced me to kind of get into the nuts and bolts of how the planning, the building department worked, and realize all the flaws and how we, it's not that we necessarily didn't have the resources to enforce a code, or didn't know what we're supposed to do, but the process was written, and frankly, invented by Tom Ickus and Allison Murray in the 90s, out of full cloth, after a 15-year experiment, we knew where the holes were now. So this is an attempt by me, Kathy Moniz, Kurt Lavallo, and Joe Ariel to close those holes, and the model that I started with was the DMV, on the principle that, you know, when I get pulled over, if my tail is broken, the cop just gives me a ticket, and I gotta go to the judge and deal with it there, and why don't we do the same thing if you, Tom, have, you know, the ceiling is falling into the kitchen? Why do we give up the landlord two, three, four, sometimes 12 months' worth of orders to remedy in court cases? Is there a way to streamline it, and is that a good parallel? So, I mean, I think it's a decent parallel, the DMV versus this, licensing, property owners, licensing drivers.
Not to be disrespectful, but I think our law protects this village against lawsuits, and I think yours is not enforceable, and it's going to result in lawsuits.
Well, we'll get Joe's opinion, because Joe Ariel, he thinks this is enforceable and is not remarkably like...
I wrote an email and asked him if he had reviewed, and he...
He, he, he sent me a text earlier, actually, telling me that he did reply, but, and he said yes, but he didn't think he would have gotten it in time, because he sent it right before.
He saw this last, he saw this last fall. We'll get another, I'll get another opinion from Joe. That's a good, because it's obviously a point we need to get.
But, but, Jason, my point, don't we want to win-win? And I think an enforceable law, and I think if we take the two together, and take the best and the few sections that I really question, and put them in a different place in our law, it incorporates the best of the two, and...
Well, could you, could you, maybe Ariana and Sally have seen this before, what sections, because I'm sure there's some of this, which is just kind of wrote, some of this is not really worthwhile, what are the sections that are the real issues?
Okay.
What, just so we can, just don't have to go into detail, just list them, so I can circle them on my law.
Well...
Or is it all of them?
No.
Not all of them.
You know, your, your law, in some instances, doesn't go far enough, and declare itself far enough, such as, you have under 129-7C, whenever ownership of a property is transferred, the new owner must register within 15 days of change of title. You're making an assumption that the ownership changes, it's still a rental, it may not be. So, we wrote, whenever ownership of a property is transferred, the new owner must register within 15 days of the date of change of title, if the new owner intends rental, to continue the annual registration fee for the rental transfers with ownership transfer for that fiscal year. So what we did, basically, was take a lot of your concepts and flush them out. There are a couple of places where we do have some major differences.
Yeah, what are the major differences?
Okay, major differences are, okay, you have a checklist which includes confirmation that the property has paid...
What section are you looking at?
Okay. There are several major differences. Okay, we, absolutely, the rental property registration form shall include, not be limited...
What section are you...
This is section E on the...
129 dash what, E?
129.
129, E.
Eight, thank you.
Okay, we ask for a lot more detail than you've required, okay? We ask for written verification by the building inspector that designate, the property meets the requirements of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, and the property has passed the annual... and the property has passed the annual inspection.
Those are both in this law now.
You don't specify the New York State Building Code.
That has to be, it's implied because you have to pass that if you're going to pass the inspection.
That's what I'm saying, Jason.
It's redundant, it's redundant.
Your law implies we state it.
Okay.
There's a big difference. When you state something, that means you must do it.
Except, except that this is what I was taught by lawyers, is that you often don't want to specify exact section of the state code because if there are other subsequent sections that are amended or added to it, your law doesn't apply to it. Whereas if we just keep it at whatever the building inspection permit currently requires, that provision is automatically updated. With, say, for example, they require, not only require a prevention code, but, I don't know, some, a green building code, you know, that is not, that is a state requirement but not covered in local law. That's why I kept it vague on state requirements.
Now, you go to 129-9, inspection procedure. Okay? Stated right there, if a property is found lacking one or more of the following: running water, heat or heat source, electricity, sanitary facilities, window and sleeping space, cooking facilities, or smoke carbon monoxide detector, the property may not be rented because those are the basic New York State Fire Code requirements.
Except that that undermines the inspection as a whole, which says that you need to have all of these things in the checklist done for to pass inspection.
That's where I think you have, are going to have a legal problem because.
Yes, I didn't write laws, it's just state laws.
The checklist, okay. Some are major, some are very minor.
That's not our fault.
I don't think there is a.
This law is.
I don't think there is a single rental property. I don't think there's probably a single family property that would not have one more of some of those inspection items.
And I, and I agree with you, and this is a problem. It's because this law is designed to, is designed to evoke 100% compliance at all times from all rental properties. And the reason that, yes, the code also applies to, say, your house. Technically, the buildings are going to go because you have trees in your gutter or whatever. But when you and Bill make the decision to not fix your roof, you're the one who's harmed. When Don decides not to fix, I know you picture, but if, you know, Don doesn't fix his roof, there's a four-foot hole over his next bedroom. He's affecting someone else. So, I don't think it's, actually, having, having written the checklist and as soon as laws, I was shocked that some of the things are on the checklist. You know, the fact that you can't have a tree in your gutter is not village code, it's New York State law, which by law the building owner has to, has to enforce. Now, if we don't have the resources to enforce that, that's one thing. But I think that this law provides us the streamlined process to enforce 100% all the time.
My, I guess you and I have a different philosophy. My philosophy is, and particularly, I'm thinking of young people. I, as elected official, do not want ever in this community to have what happened and have resulted. On the other hand, I am not interested in being punitive landlords or to own occupied rentals because those people can't afford to pay their taxes. I want a standard of decent housing without going so far overboard we defeat our house.
I would agree with you if the things that were on the checklist were often high materials fixes. Most of the things that are on this checklist are just don't require money, they require time. Cleaning the gutters just takes time and a lot of, you know, mowing the lawn, not having standing water on the property. There are some things, like, for example, if you don't have storm windows, when you have the tracks in them, that can be expensive. But these are profit-making entities. If you have, on average, as I asked the landlord association at one of these meetings, what's the average rule of thumb kind of one per room rental rate? And it's about $600. So, if you've got a, a, a single-family home that's divided into six one-bedroom apartments, you're getting $3,600 a month. Times 12 is what, $36,000 plus, oh, $42,000 a year in revenue for a single-family home, 40 grand in revenue. Now, if you can't afford to fit, to clean your gutters and have to drive away, not have standing water, and get the lawn mowed, that's not our problem in the government level. You know, maybe you shouldn't be a landlord. You know, it's not our job to guarantee the profit margins of speculators, whether that's in a land deal or that's in a property. So, Ellen, you know, you own, you buy a duplex and, you know, you're charging rent and, you know, you just don't have the money to, you know, fix up the property. I'm sorry, it's not our problem. We have to look out for the tenants. And maybe you should be shut down, not that you would ever do such a thing, of course, but kind of that's the point. Let's, let's be honest, on the scale of money we're talking about. When we're talking about, you know, the fine going up from $250 to $750 per violation, that's just keeping pace with inflation. And I don't know if this came up, but, but in 2002, when the fines were set, it was $250. Now, I said it to $750. If you do an inflation calculator, it's about the same, but the profits that are made by renting has gone up much, orders of magnitude higher. So, when we're looking at the cost of repairs, we have to compare that against the revenue generated by the.
But I am not interested in enforcing on one group in the population that which we have failed to enforce year after year for every property. And until we start enforcing properly, recycle it.
But that's what this is meant to do, enforce properly, yes.
I'm talking about all properties, not designated or holding out a specific group, but all properties. We took a walk back to make on Church Street. We're supposed to all weed sidewalks, weed the gutters, keep our properties maintained. Or you're in trouble. Ariana and Kurt took a long time when the spring cleaning notice went out designated for people who are not informed what their duties and responsibilities as property owners are. That's on the books now. And it's not being enforced anywhere.
But that's what this law does. This law doesn't address what gets enforced, it says how it gets enforced. And here, but here's the, and tell me if I'm being wrong here. You're right, it singles out one group.
Right.
However, that's not always morally wrong. In this case, well, hold on, hold on, and that's fine, that's what I'm asking. In this case, what I'm saying is that, yes, this is one of those instances where it's morally right to segregate one group from another. Because the segregation that's happening is, in one group is those whose delinquency harms themselves and the other is those whose delinquency harms someone else. And I think as a government, we have a moral obligation to protect those cannot protect themselves from the delinquency of others. We do not have the responsibility to protect you necessarily from your own delinquency.
I do, you have.
Disagree, that's clear.
It says I have to cut my grass.
And we do, and we do have that law, and those matters.
And we don't enforce it.
And the thing is that that, that delinquency does not just affect the homeowner who's living in that home. The point of cutting your grass is for the greater community, not for your own aesthetics. It's for the idea of fleas and ticks living in your grass. And, you know, if my cat goes in your yard and you haven't mowed your lawn and, you know, maybe I shouldn't be letting my cat outside, but that's a separate issue too. But, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I do, but it gets to resources and hours in a day. And remember, the prior board, and I objected to this, moved our full-time building inspector, cut it down to half-time. So, we now have less hours in the week to enforce it though than we did just a few months ago.
Excuse me, Jason, your recommendation was to hire a planner to replace the building inspector.
To replace one of our two full-time building inspectors, fully intending to keep the other one full-time as a necessary requirement to the local government.
That is not.
It is exactly what I said. It is what, exactly what it was. But Tom, you had a.
Excuse me, I'm going to have to correct. And I don't want to say the wrong thing because it would be possibly litigation. However, we follow the recommendation of the mayor. There are reasons that we can discuss in executive session as to why we have a half-time building inspector.
That is not my recommendation. That was never my recommendation.
Yes, it was.
What it was is temporary until we fill the full-time position and you decided not to budget for a full-time position because you thought the planning, the building inspector could only.
We still budget for a full-time.
Half-time, no, it's not, but it's a half-time building inspector.
Really? And you're budgeting.
It was over my objection, Sally. You changed the budget over my objection.
Not a building inspector we didn't know.
Tom, what was your point, please?
My question was whether proposing this law in whichever version, that is to say, the version that you drafted or the versions that are being proposed as amended, is creating a new category of law or is there already existing a, or any number of pieces of legislation that govern rental properties?
There's multiple state laws. For example, as Sally mentioned, the New York State Fire Prevention Code, the New York State Building Code. And, and you'll see, the checklist that you see have a citation, one of the columns, about where you can find it. There's really very little that's in the village code, surprisingly, though I think it's something we should address and probably move everything that's in state code and village code because if we prosecute you under the state code, the state gets a fine money. If we prosecute you for the same thing in the village code, the village gets a fine. So, that's really the only legal distinction that people make. But most of the actual building maintenance, property maintenance code is state law. And even if parts of the village code are, are basically kind of duplicative of state laws so that we can get the fines. So, it's really the how it's enforced, not what's enforced, is one of this law.
We do not start in different places. We are in agreement.
Yeah.
And that mean, right now, our code only requires inspection of non-owner occupied.
Which causes a problem because what if you have a duplex? Is that owner occupied or not?
So, half of, is it half of the rentals are never inspected in this section.
I don't know what that number is.
So, we are in agreement that all rental properties.
Must be inspected.
Must be inspected.
And remember, 75% of our constituents are registered. Seven, three out of four are registered. So, this is a huge thing for most of the people.
Also, this will mean that renters, rental people must be registered. We are in agreement.
Okay.
Our law really is flushing out in a more specific way the very things that Jason has addressed. One major place we disagree, and that is what happens to displaced tenants. And under this, and Jason's proposal is if I give you a renting, or if I come and inspect and you don't meet the inspection standards and we didn't, we don't agree on this either because I think there's a big difference between a gutter not being cleaned and you're going to be not allowed to rent at all because you didn't pass the gutter cleaning?
No, well, you didn't pass it after three reminders that you needed to clean the gutters. That's what I'm saying.
That's not what the law.
It is what my law is.
So, the point is, okay, so if I find you're in, not in compliance and you don't pass the inspection, it is your responsibility, the tenant will be displaced and you will have the responsibility.
I remember reading that.
Okay, that we absolutely disagree on. Although, Ariana, now we're talking about it, and if we would agree to that section, that full displacement tenant, if it was applied to somebody who was illegal, had not registered their property, was renting their property, was found out and did not pass the inspection, then the landlord.
Or if somebody purchases a property where there's already rentals being rented and those tenants, he, this person registers the property because the former person did not have it registered or whatever the case may be, those people should still have a place left. I think there is room for the displaced tenant.
What about if you're the landlord and Rebecca's your tenant? And because you just can't be bothered to fix the place or whatnot, right? You, so you're sent, under this law, this law passes. You know, the, when the law passes, you have to 100% pass the inspection on the checklist. And then 30, a year from now, right, so you guys passed, Rebecca's, we're on the pass. 11 months from now, the village mails you and Rebecca a copy of that checklist so you, the landlord and the tenant, both know what's expected. 30 years later, Holly shows up and you fail the inspection. Now, what that means is the village is saying that your apartment is no longer high enough quality to be rented. And Rebecca, so then say you lose your CL and Rebecca has to move somewhere. Not because of her fault, but because as an irresponsible landlord, you let the trees stick out of the roof for six months or whatever, you know? That's, that's the thinking is, and what came to us in my first year ever in office, in '03, it was my first month in office, I think, I was up on a ladder on Henry DuBois, I got a call that there was an apartment on South Side, but not the South Side apartment side, the campus side of South Side Avenue, that had sanitaries who were shit coming up through the bathtub. And these people had signed a lease the week before, they, they're freshmen in college, or sophomores, I guess. But so like, they didn't have any place to go, they had no cars, and they ended up at a super rate motel, walking the campus. And that just seemed really unfair to me because when you're dealing with a $42,000 property sometimes in revenue, it just seems the wrong person's getting punished for negligence, you know what I mean? And I don't know if this is the right way to deal with that, but it's just, it's an effort in that direction.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, okay.
I don't disagree with you.
But I think there are three different things you're saying at the same time. One, that property was probably not registered, we're going to require it to be registered.
It was actually registered.
If it wasn't registered and they were renting it, they're in big trouble by this, okay?
But what if it was registered and had passed its prior inspection?
What I am concerned about, Jason, and we have not, because you feel that the checklist is not to be touched, this is a.
It would just require a separate local law. It's not untouched.
I think there is a big difference between telling Rebecca, Rebecca, you have a paint chip on your interior window sill, maybe two paint chips, and if that's equivalent to an exploded sewer, I don't think so. And I think that's where we're in trouble.
Yeah.
I think you're going to have to differentiate or group. And we tried to do it in all, by using the six things you must.
Right.
I think we should still have the displaced tenant part of it. But I think, I think what Sally is saying, like here, in enforcement, because you said, I do have this in my law, and you do, but if, if a property owner receives five or more citations in a six-month period, then the rental property license shall be revoked by the building inspector for a term of six months. So, what if my citations are paint chips, no screens in my windows? Like, it's things that really don't make a place unlivable. Whereas the situation you're describing is completely unlivable.
Except, here's the thing, and this is always a context. Remember, 12 months ago, there were no paint chips. There was nothing in your gutters. Everything was fine because you passed the inspection when you first registered. So, the only thing that you're going to deal with is what's happened within the last 12 months. And so, if, and then, so remember, but 30 days before your 12-month annual inspection, we mail you, we take it over to mail you a list of everything we're going to look at.
I think we should do that.
As I was saying, so that's one thing, by the time we get there, you've not only passed this thing with 100% accuracy 12 months ago, but 30 days ago, you've got the list. I can't think of any excuse to not have everything on that checklist done. And then, if despite all that, you still have five or more of these things, it just means you're just throwing your nose at us. And I'm sorry, it's not our, now, now this is just.
Let me go the other way.
If you've got five, five violations that have happened the last 12 months that you can get fixed 30 days before you knew we were coming, when we told you what we're looking at.
Then fine them if they're lying.
But that's, and other than that, you go right to court. We don't just, right, you're not fined. We're not going to deal with.
Here is the difference. In my mind, and I think in anybody else's mind, five times you have it cut your grass. Five times the gutters are cleaned.
There's a belligerence level at a certain point. I don't know if it's five or not.
That's not my job to deal with belligerence. I dealt with that a lot in the last two years in public life. And it, my point is that you do have an effective enforceable, and here's where I'm going to. You were talking earlier about real order, okay? Jason, the laws we have on the books right now aren't enforced. They are not enforced. Why am I going to think, even if I grant your law and say it's wonderful, and let's do it? Okay, I mean, I think over, I don't think there's that big a deal.
I know, we're gonna pass something, but we'll see.
Put together nicely.
And here's why, here's answering your question. I think, and this is my theory, I think that the laws that we have on the books that are unenforced, including not only the Village Code, but the New York State Property Maintenance Code, which by state law, we have to enforce within building inspector, even though we don't, we're not really taking people for maple trees in the gutters, though we should be technically. I think that the reason that those codes are not enforced is because the process that was designed to enforce them requires so much time, we cannot get them done in a reasonable amount of time. And I know because I've lived in apartments where it took more than a year to get a code violation remedied, and it's more than a term of lease.
That makes.
That's what I'm trying to go to D M B, like, we find you? Uh-uh, come on.
I'm not gonna disagree with that. What I'm trying to say is, I have the checklist now. I'm the building inspector, and I spend fifteen minutes and only check the smoke detector and give you a passing grade. That is not a proper inspection.
Except, what has to happen is then say, say you're the building inspector, Sally, and you hand me back that sheet that has the checklist, and either one of two things. One is only the smoke detectors checked, everything is blank. Or two, everything else is just made up, and just that's checked. If I find out that those happens, you're fired tomorrow.
Well, I asked you this before, and I said that these checklists, it says here, currently in use. They're not currently in use.
Holly tells me they are. I'll check, if you have inspections, I can look up. Since last fall. I made them up last fall, so they've been in use since like December.
Last fall, when did it?
Probably December of last year, they've been in use, November, December.
I mean, the people that I spoke to should have gotten this checklist, then.
If you give me an address, not right this second, but I'll look it up, I'll double-check, I'll do some ground truthing of this.
But I mean, we are refined a lot of the things you want in a much more detailed way. So when you come to register, I give you the checklist, then you are going to be inspected by me.
Right.
We don't disagree on that, and here's.
And that's not the current process, right?
That's not the current process.
That the person gets.
Right, this second, like tomorrow?
This checklist.
No, no, it's not this process at all.
Okay, you need to make an appointment. We make an appointment, and if you fail to be there, when I made the appointment to come inspect you, you get fined.
Right, now we fine you with fifty dollars.
But that's not even your law.
Was it?
So what, and for the building inspection, I come, I'm the building inspector, I'm gonna inspect Rebecca. She's the landlord. She knows, she's had this checklist, okay?
Uh-huh.
And once I inspect, and I do not find problems, she finds it, I sign it. Okay? That way, if there is, and I see.
You have paper trail, yeah.
You've got a check on both your building inspector and your landlord, and if, in fact, you as the tenant decide after the inspection to smash the door and break it down, and call the building inspector and say, I complained about my broken door, okay? Rebecca has the proof.
Six weeks ago, it was fine.
It was fine. All of those things we have spelled out. And I guess what I'm gonna suggest, because I feel close to this, and you feel close to yours, if we could ask Rebecca and Tom, if they were willing to take both of our laws.
I'm willing.
And mesh them.
What do you guys think? Before we get to the next steps, what's, just again, we've heard much, we've been rehashing of the greatest sets here, but what's.
What I keep thinking throughout this discussion is if there are, you drafted. See, I don't want to keep calling it your laws. It's a draft.
But no, but we all is.
But it's a draft for our consideration. And so we have two drafts for our consideration. And we have an attorney. Are there, is there an opinion of the attorney that one of them?
He hasn't reviewed ours at all.
Well, so then the question I have.
I know he's signed off on this as legally defensible and sound, but I didn't know he had this.
So if he looks at this and says it's legally defensible and sound, then I would want your opinion.
Then it's a policy decision.
Yeah, about whether or not this accomplishes the objectives of the new local law, and doesn't have legal failings that would make us liable, you know, in either court cases or in whatever with landlords in question. And is that considered to be punitive towards all landlords? So if it's not punitive, but it affects the objectives that you have, and it's in keeping with the state law, then it can't be perfect. I'm with it. I'll go with it in its imperfect state, because everything is imperfect.
But subject change, okay. I think then what we're gonna do is send the amended proposed law, which was worked on by, by getting dragged in by landlords, tenants, the building inspector, and trustees, at the request, it was an ad hoc committee, as a result of a due and bribe by the landlords on this proposed law. What I would suggest is if we send ours to Joe, which we did not do because we needed this discussion, and ask his opinion of ours.
Then I would suggest that we do that with dispatch, so that we don't spend yet another meeting going over details that are extremely difficult for a new person to keep track of while we're having them. You know, I've got my own little marked up thing here, and I'm not able to keep track of all of these issues.
My point is, I don't think our two laws are that far apart. Okay. I think there are some refinements that we provide that Jason's is lacking.
Okay, fine.
So that's all.
So then I'm gonna be very happy to have you, are we all in agreement?
I totally agree. One thing, I've read both, and I had a pretty decent sense of what the differences were between the two, but what I have not done is set them down side by side, side by side. And I have read them both, but I haven't done like a, what you would consider a line-by-line comparison, which I would like to do.
And Rebecca, that's really even harder to do, because we moved some lines that weren't deleted, but else were.
Understood, I know that's true.
So let me send the law to Joe from Ariana and myself, and it's.
That sounds good.
Okay.
All right, just.
Five-minute break?
Um, why don't we deal with two things, and then before, we'll take a five-minute break before executive session. I think table type one, because I apologize, I thought that was going out in the packet, but it's not, it's just as relevant in two weeks as it is tonight, so we'll just change that. We'll talk about it next time.
What do you want to say?
The type one action law?
Yeah.
Just table it till our next meeting.
Can I ask a question, for favor? I think my biggest objection to the law is that I'm not interested in dealing with the two thousand and seven map. I'd like it updated. The Hudsonia.
I'm trying to think.
The Hudsonia map.
They may not change as much as you'd think.
The waterlands, the wetlands.
Woodland Con, Woodland Con wasn't in existence in two thousand.
That map costs me than five and ten thousand dollars.
We need to update it. Can't somebody just go and.
Not for free, no. You need to.
Why not?
Because you know wetlands are colleges, because wetlands are not always visible, they're not just swamps. It's certain indicator species, you need to be, wetlands are having a certain number of certain types of species.
Okay, without getting into trouble, I believe that there is someone in this community who's capable of doing that.
I'm not sure it's necessary, because I don't think they've changed that much, but let's talk about this in two weeks. The whole point is I'd like to table it until.
Right, but I wanted to bring to your attention, in case you wanna figure out how to do this. I'm concerned with a map that is dated two thousand and seven.
Right, okay.
A lot has changed in the village.
Um, I'll look into that. Well, this is easy, I'd like to, we already, you know, actually, we don't need a board action on this. Nancy said about the twenty-five thousand dollars, we already approved it with that condition. We need a separate motion.
She wasn't officially noted that the board is agreeing that it was twenty-five thousand.
We already agreed to that in the motion.
I'm okay with that.
All right, then we don't need to deal with that on the table.
Does she, does she not get our minutes?
Oh, yes.
Our minutes are being sent to everybody?
Everybody.
Okay.
Who's this?
I'm just wondering, because it should, I mean, I would imagine it was in our minutes.
Fine, but you know, it would have been, it's gonna be a long conversation. I move that we tell the treasurer that yes, we agreed to twenty-five thousand dollars for the easement.
Second.
All in favor?
You did it already.
I know, just vote again. Aye?
Aye.
No.
No, you didn't agree to that, okay.
I don't agree with the fact it was done.
I know, I know.
The problem should be discussed in executive session.
I made, there's no problem, and I just, I made that because the description was getting longer than the action. So, all right, and now, the unfortunate recycling containers, usually that just goes to a complaint to the treasurer. Is there a bigger issue than that?
Yes, because we passed the law that said that recycling containers have to provide by all, all.
So can the same file, you recall them, or?
There's three waste haulers in the village, they all need to provide recycling containers in proportion to the amount of garbage containers.
And they're not doing it.
And I, and.
And so I think that.
We should start enforcing that.
We start enforcing that.
We do as soon as we hear about complaints. If anyone knows of an address.
Well, you have a complaint.
Yeah.
You have a complaint sitting at this table.
I've complained, Katie knows I've complained several times.
And I have pulled out the big girl pants and complained at them, and they come and do what they're supposed to do, and then.
Follow the procedure in the law.
But it's not just picking up the garbage, it's about providing the receptacle. And there are apartment complexes that do not have that.
And we will yank the, we will yank the license of every waste hauler who refuses to provide it by that law. I mean, they lose all the business in the village, but we need to know where and when that's happening.
But it's, I mean, this is nothing new.
Well, but there's also nothing that we don't know the addresses. Just tell me, tell us.
I mean, this has been discussed, and the person that it was discussed with is no longer here. But that was, it was when the law was passed that this was discussed.
And were there specific callers at the time?
It wasn't specific callers, it was specific addresses.
Okay.
Apartment complex, mostly.
Is there a record of that somewhere?
Probably not, because it wasn't an official complaint. It was.
We need official complaint?
From village board members to village employees?
No, but if there's no record, I don't know, where would you, what do you want me to enforce? Just, I don't, I'm not, I can't magically remember everything, you know?
I have filed a formal complaint with clerk, I will do so with the mayor as well.
But then what's the issue?
And what we should do.
There isn't one.
It's been filed. If you are aware of specific complexes, addresses, what have you, then we should.
Let the clerk know?
Yeah.
And it's spelled out in the law. If Katie or Nancy is not doing what the law says, that's an issue.
Not Nancy.
There was, there was like a rogue group of people that went around and created lists that I'm fairly certain our building department was given, but this was officially.
First I heard about it, I don't know.
It was, it was part of a zero waste initiative.
The building department's got it.
Well, look, and anybody, look, anyone, whether you're on the board or in the public, if your waste haulers are not providing recycling containers, please call two-five-five-zero-one-three-zero, give your address and your waste hauler if you know it, and we'll take care of it.
And I want the immediate problems that we know about taken care of immediately.
It doesn't necessarily happen tomorrow. Things take time sometimes, but we'll.
This isn't you.
I will call them again.
Sally already said it was.
I'm being horned, Ray.
What I'm talking about was, is not, you didn't get what I'm talking about. This is directly to the building.
All right. Well, I guess I'll move, we go into executive session, discuss union contract issues.
Before you, would you just make five seconds? I just need one other housekeeping point of view.
What's that?
On the consent agenda for forty-eight John Street, Nancy says I specifically have to have permission from the board to write them a refund check for the amount of nine hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Some would.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question, Jason. Part of that was given credit, and it's very unclear from the memo we got, what portion is owed and what will come from the credit given. So why don't we just move that it be rectified during the end?
And then a check can be written to clear this slate?
Yes.
I'm going.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there's a motion, I'm able to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a five-minute break first, though.